Alrighty guys, I guess we should probably get started. Okay, so item number one, Public Works, the CKPI chip trucks on street sweeping. When it was dry, which it hasn't been for a few days, as the trucks were coming across, they make quite a mess uptown. So we were discussing what we can do for options to help alleviate the mess uptown. And Jen, I think you've got a sheet.
Yeah, so as Herb had said.
Can I declare a conflict in this case?
Okay.
I have rechecked municipal superintendent and he provided the rates and overtime. Sweeping rates for normal working hours are $215 an hour. Sweeping rates for overtime and related work would be $235 an hour. In speaking with the operators, they feel it would take approximately two hours to sweep from the intersection of Third and Fisher to First Street. They feel that sweeping that area three times per week would be a good start. Recommendation is to provide a letter to CKPI advising them of this problem and suggest this is a solution possibly entering to an agreement with them for the sweeping services.
I think I seen Nelson or Sam.
You did that.
He's got better hair than me.
I know. Come on up, Sam. I'm tired today.
His hair is amazing.
Is the street sweeping a solution or is there something we can do to help them better? Because the dust is a problem, right?
I think the ultimate solution would be some sort of truck stop before you get to town to eliminate all that, all the dust in the tires. Mr. Queering from CKPI has reached out, would like to set up a meeting to discuss some possible options and what they're working on also on the Saskatchewan side. They were hopeful that they were potentially paving that entire road to the west. However, he doesn't believe that's the case at this point. But CKPI is definitely willing to have a discussion and to see what they can do to help, that's for sure.
If there's something we can do from the political side of things, right, to help get a truck turnout or some rumble strips or something, that would be a... It's not that I want to start charging them for sweeping the streets, but if there's something we can do politically to help get that dust off way back there by the border, then we should try to help.
Once I meet with Mr. Queering, I'll bring back a report of the discussion and information that he provides and provides to you guys as well.
Okay.
At the end of the day, it's probably a combination of few things, right?
Yeah.
Have the rumble strips turned off someplace as well as the cleaning more often?
Yeah, I think they could all work hand in hand for a comprehensive solution, yeah.
Yeah, it's just that everybody's working so hard trying to keep the downtown clean and when it's dry like it was there a week or two ago when those trucks came into town, it's just...
It's horrendous, yeah.
You know, you just think of walking on your mom's floors after they're cleaned. It's not going to go over well.
Not a good, yeah, not a good thing.
So you'll have a chat with?
Mr. Queering and then I'll come back.
Come back?
Yeah.
Everybody's good for that?
Welcome.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. There isn't a hockey game on, so you can be back.
Maybe he's a basketball fan.
Basketball.
Okay, I don't know where and how far he is. Pride Crosswalk.
Did he just go again? Cause he's on for the next two things.
Sam. Nelson.
Oh, did you want to get Nelson?
Alright, number 112, Pride Crosswalk.
Might as well just sound check Sam.
Okay, so you heard the... maybe you didn't hear the presentation from Trent Allen. They would like to get a permanent designation of the crosswalk as a Pride Crosswalk. He's made some requests. He would like a designation of the crosswalk, something formal, make it permanent. He would like us to provide the paint, an estimate of $312. Town's not obligated to do the paint, we'll be volunteers. Looking from someone from the town to show the correct method of painting. It's possibly a cost saver to the town and he has a letter of support from KSD.
I think the idea is great, I think it's wonderful. The price, I was waiting to see what the price would be before providing a recommendation. I think the price is fair. I'm not sure what the rules are in terms of a forever designation or if it should be by council to council. I think that's something that you guys might want to discuss and determine. We provided barricades and support last year, yeah, last year a little bit. If that's something they would like again, we have no problem doing that. I'm not sure how much of our expertise would fit into that type of painting, but whatever we can do to be available to help would be totally okay with us, with me and you. Obviously on the direction of council.
Personally, I don't have a problem with it. I think that if this little bit helps people, then I think we can help. I don't know how the rest of council feels about it.
So what are we talking about right now? About paying for the paint?
Paying for the paint and providing the designation.
So what would we be doing for permanent designation? It would be...
I think the idea of council to council is valid, right? So the remainder of our term and then whoever's here in four years, let them make their own choices.
Do you see like a sign coming up, like?
That could be something we discuss.
That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see, go ahead. I'd like to see a sign go up and I'd like to see some type of permanent designation, even if it's council to council, but some type of street sign that goes up, but whatever.
If there was a sign to go up, we would fund this for that.
Okay.
There you go. I think that'd be nice, it'd be good and then...
To the people.
Even if you pass, see that the paint is there, then you know it's still a Pride Crosswalk. I'm all for it.
Yeah. Okay, so we're...
Resolution.
Resolution to move forward.
And is that paint, like is Trent, we talked about, like a... Is there a better paint that you can buy that like?
Well, we were...
No, yeah, go ahead.
We were discussing a little bit with the supplier. The supplier, paint supplier for the town, had suggested a different type of paint. I'm not sure if further discussion has been had with the supplier, but that's something we can hash out.
Cause I just, I would rather spend $600 on paint last...
Yeah.
You know, you might have to do it annually anyway, but if it's going to completely go over the winter, I don't know what other communities that have done similar things, whether they, it just completely gone after a long term, they just redo it or whether it's...
I believe Ottawa has used like a latex. It's quite, quite a bit more expensive. You sort of melt it to the surface and adhesive and stuff.
Is it not?
Just fairly, very, very little, yeah, just as a very thin film and...
That's like that elastometric paint or whatever.
Yeah, I can remember the exact.
It's expensive, but it's good. But cause like Trent was saying, 12 gallons of paint for 300 bucks. Like, I don't know, I couldn't walk into any place that sells paint in town here and buy paint for that. Like, I don't know, just not seeing... It needs to be more expensive, but maybe it needs to be more expensive. Yeah, I think it has to be down to the...
You don't want to spend more and still have to do it every year.
That's right, I mean, exactly, yeah.
So we're in favor of the idea?
Yeah.
We're in favor of the sign. A resolution will come forward and you fellows will work out the paint quality.
Awesome, sounds good.
Okay, cool.
Yeah?
Yeah, don't go away.
Oh, Hogan, 852 Hogan.
Let me just grab my...
Okay. Please.
Okay, we got a letter, a complaint letter from a resident living at 852 Hogan. He provided a timeline of events. In terms of dispute, I'm not going to go into like great detail of the timeline of events because there's some that I could dispute, others, but I don't think that's really the main focus of what his letter is. His main letter is focused on getting the town to pay for the ball valve installation at his residence, which was $193.20, and also to waive the water fee for his neighbor and himself for the trouble they went through. So basically what we've done in the past, in order to use our magicist to thaw your line, we require a ball valve to be installed. And because that's private property and that's internal plumbing, we... The homeowner has to pay for it. That's been our traditional position on that. So that's what he did. So that's where that bill came from. We were unfortunately not successful thawing his place either with the DBH or the magicist. We kind of forewarned him that that was a possibility of it not working, which he actually does state in the letter as well. And what we do normally for water service bills, the person providing it just pays a minimum bill, sort of as a token gesture that they're doing a nice thing and then the other person just gets estimated. So the estimation practice, I think I'd be open to discussion on that one. I'd be open to discussion on all of it, but I think that one, we could look at different things to do, but the ball valve, I think that's been a standard thing. Again, if that's something that council would like to change, then...
How many freeze ups did we add this year? How many people were on temporary service lines?
14, I believe is the number.
So if we do that for this homeowner, we're doing it for 13 other homeowners?
Potentially if they don't have a ball valve, yes.
Yeah, so I'm not in favor.
And actually it was more freezer than that. Temporary water was 15, we probably had 20 some freeze ups we were able to thaw.
For sure, yeah, I don't know, but I was just saying, temporary washers.
How many people in town?
Did they install, for sure?
Um, that's a good question. I would, I can think of at least two or three for sure that were installed.
And we didn't pay for them?
Correct.
Is his water working now?
Uh, no, still frozen.
Still frozen?
Still frozen, yeah.
There's a few that are still frozen. We're starting to see many of them thaw. And we're hoping, we were hoping by mid-June they would all be thawed, so we're sort of on that track still. It's been a long time. People have been providing temporary water. We're seeing a little bit of exhaustion from some people in the community.
From his letter, is there, is there any validity to us causing the issue at the time?
So, I guess I'll speak to that, because he spoke directly to a statement that I allegedly made to him. So the discussion, the best to my recollection was regarding, does having snow on the boulevard provide some type of insulation factor? And I said, yes, it does. He said, so then when you guys removed it, that caused our line to freeze? And I said, we can't draw that. That's not an A to B conclusion you can draw. Like, would a little bit of extra snow help for insulation? Yes. However, the width of that street for emergency service vehicles requires the snow to be lifted in order to get that.
And we always do that?
Yes, yeah.
So that's not something new this year?
No, so this winter, our average frost ups in town are, they get to about 10 feet at our probes at the police station. This year, we believe they were around 11 and a half feet of frost up. So this year was like a kind of an anomaly year. So even with this bleeder, I'm sorry.
But we didn't do anything different in that area this year than we've done every other year?
Correct. So, I mean, he didn't really represent the discussion we had, I don't think, accurately. And his point is, like, the point was, does it carry an additional insulation factor? Yes, it does. I can't make that conclusion that, yes, that caused you to freeze because then everyone else should have froze on that street as well.
Yeah, but we're doing it every year, what's the difference? And it provides insulation or not, whether you said, oh yeah, you definitely wouldn't have froze if there was snow on the boulevard. Even if that was true, we need to remove this snow for emergency vehicles. Like, I don't know, it's just...
It's a very narrow street. There is even discussion previously of, the previous fire chief had discussed us looking at making it a one-way. That's how narrow it is.
Really?
So how many other homes on that street froze?
I know of one other for sure, one of our staff.
And they went to temporary water also?
Correct.
And they're still on temporary?
Uh, he's actually let it go about a week, a week and a half ago.
So in this thing, when you talk to him and you said that if you want, if you want the magicist, then it's up to you to put the ball valve in.
Correct.
So that was his choice, right?
Correct. He was asking for other options. What else can we do? And I believe actually Kurt had that, our foreman, had that discussion with him. If you want us to go this route to this, using the magicist that thawed you, you'll need to install a ball valve.
What do you think, Larry?
I think we shouldn't be responsible for that ball valve. I can't remember where I saw it on here, but I thought I saw where he would get charged.
We would estimate his billing for that time period.
Or previous billings, or by his previous billings. Why wouldn't we just do the same things we're doing for the person that's supplying him water and just give it to him at a basic rate? Because he would have less water pressure and whatever else anyway. So it wouldn't be the same as previous billings, right?
Potentially, yeah. Again, that was just sort of something that the town was already engaged in when I got here. So I haven't really, it's not something we've really looked at in great detail. That's why at the beginning I said I'd be willing to have that discussion. If that's something.
And it is something I noticed when I was reading it. But I mean, he is the one that asked for the ball valve to be put in, knowing that full well that he was going to have to pay for that. And so went forward, so he committed to it.
I think he's...
Trying to get reimbursed now.
Correct. I think he's looking at it more of an inconvenience fee that he would like to see reimbursed for.
Carrie, what do you think?
What do I think?
Yeah.
I support the engineering department with the recommendation of not reimbursing the cost.
Trevor?
Yeah, I think he pays for the ball valve and whatever Sam wants to work out that he's, that's... I mean, all the instances of how you've worked it before and what you think is fair, but whatever you think is fair in terms of an adjustment. If you think there's one that needs to be done for his water bill, then well means. But him, he installed the, you know, I think I'm going through the same thing right now with my water in terms of trying to figure out some issues with the pressure. And I have no idea if it's my issue or the town's issue, but the questions again, I have to ask are, okay, I do this and I'm paying for it. He clearly knew that he was doing it and he was paying for it. So now to ask for the money back because it just, because it didn't work is not a... Not a fair, but maybe an adjustment in the...
And I tried to kind of temper his expectations as well because we weren't having great success at that point with the magicist as well. We tried to buy new hoses for it, thinking maybe the hosing was incorrect. The mechanics looked it over and it did seem to be functional. So at the time, I was just sort of letting him know, like, this hasn't worked. We don't, I don't know specifically exactly why it's not working. It just hasn't been as successful as we'd like, so...
Okay, the consensus is we don't pay. Alright, thank you.
Sorry, I just have one more quick question since we're on this subject here. I guess the only concern that I have with this whole situation is that we've got a member of our community that was frozen. They went to the expense of getting a ball valve, but then they waited six weeks from, from the point that they got the ball valve that we recommended they install. They waited six, basically six weeks, maybe a little less, five weeks. I know it was a cold winter, but...
Should the service have been better? I think that's a fair point, Chad. Or Councilor Zelinski, I think that's a fair point. But just the volume of freeze ups that we were... And so our initial push was to make sure everyone is on temporary water, right? So once he was on temporary water, but his priority in our eyes dropped way to the bottom and as new people were freezing, like, should there have been better communication with them? I think that is something we can definitely, we should definitely look in the mirror and say, we could have been better communicating with this gentleman. And I think that's, that's something that's on our department to...
For sure. Yeah, I've got no problem with anything else to do with the whole thing. It's just, that's, that's the point that I was trying to get at was, I don't, if it takes five weeks, it takes five weeks, but it's the communication that needs to go... We need to be better at that, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
For sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, arena sign.
This was discussed during budget. The current sign at the wellness center was broken and needed, council's direction was to repair it. Chris received three quotes. One from Cardinal Signs at $5,396, Electra Signs $8,305, SRS Signs $6,110. Sorry, recommendation is to go with Cardinal Signs as per the lowest quote and repair the sign.
Perfect. Any discussion?
Yeah, when we talked about this, we talked about changing the lighting system in here.
Yeah, to LED.
To LED, and I don't see that in here.
Sam or Chris did not get responses back from them in regards to LED yet. He just wanted this brought forward, that it hasn't been fallen off the plate. And he explained that an LED will be a retrofit, not a repair.
So Electra Signs is with LED or without LED?
Without.
So should we send this back to him to get it done over again with the, rather than paying this $5,400 and then having the company come back again, paying for them to come back in, and then having it relit with LED?
Can we design it as an extra when they come here and get the price and...
We should be able to because the, you may even be able to get the LED upgrade locally.
Yeah.
From the electrician, you know? The sign, at least it'll get fixed and up and running. So I would start with one. My question that I had on process, we approved this in the budget. Does it have to come back to council?
You have to now pick who we're using.
But we don't do that for all purchases, do we?
When they go up for three quotes, they do.
Can we change that?
Yeah, because it takes a long process.
I can check with Graham.
Okay.
I wonder if we could change it for even just an amount, you know, if it's under $10,000 or something.
Cause we went through all the discussion during budget and then to do it again?
And then to come back, and then to come back again to get it?
For a resolution.
Resolution.
Okay, I'll check with Graham and if this cannot, if this can be approved because budget was approved and not have to go for resolution, it won't come back.
And I guess if we can't do that, can we change any bylaws or rules or policies to allow us to start doing that?
I would have to ask Graham. I'm not familiar enough with the tendering process.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking, so that if you go and have a discussion with Graham and he says no, then let's bring back whatever we have to do, so...
It seems kind of silly because we approve a lot of checks that we don't approve at the... Every time, so... Okay?
I think it's just a little tender.
Yeah. I'll check with Graham.
I think that's what I feel it's based on, is that when anything goes to tender, then it needs to come back, but...
I know there is a threshold.
But it takes, like, it's step after step. Like, it takes six weeks to even get to order again.
To pay for a sun. And then it's going to take them six weeks to come up there. So be lucky if it's not a...
A winter job.
Fix it double.
Okay, so you're...
Yeah, I'll talk to Graham first.
Sorry. Are you guys going to be comfortable with us making those decisions on those big ticket items before it comes back here? Well, because when you guys saw, let's say for the border system here, like, when you saw that, you're like, no, this isn't, we would like to, like, so, you know what I mean? Like, on a big ticket item, if we're bringing it back?
I think we need a threshold, right? Like, I think...
$250,000 is different than $6,000 or something.
Well, I agree, but I'm just saying, like, we're going to be making some big decisions here on some large tenders coming down the pipeline. And they were usually coming back here, so I just...
I thought we had something in our purchasing policy that addressed these minor purchases, but...
I think that was just for Randi.
Yes.
Well, let's get some...
Or you have...
7,500, I believe is my threshold. Randi is 25,000, I believe.
Yeah, so this was $5,600, $5,400 bucks?
But I think it's because it's the tender process, right?
Okay.
I will, I will look into it.
Okay, let's find that.
Thank you, Sam.
Alrighty. 2.1, surveys on the lakefront lots.
At the May 27th committee, the whole meeting, council discussed the amendment to the lakefront lot from 100 feet to 75 feet and if the purchasers of these properties would require a new survey. This was an issue sheet done up by myself and Randy. So after further review of policies and bylaws along with a discussion with the building inspector, it has been realized that the surveying of the lots would still be required by property owners when they apply for their actual building permit. Therefore, the new setback could be surveyed at the same time. The existing surveys undertaken by the property owners show an estimated distance and not measurements of the actual house they will be building. And the property owner will need a revised staking certificate when they are applying for their building permit. This will then address the surveying of their revised setback. Does that make sense?
Didn't we?
Yeah, sort of.
Yeah. The lawyer advised that the town should not be moving pegs during measurement or whatever?
Right. This won't involve any moving pegs. So basically, it's just to advise the lakefront lot owners, when they go to start building their house, what is required, they've all got basically template surveys with 960 square foot house, which is the smallest you can go. It's plotted on their current survey. When they go to build, they need to supply Balkan Uncle Chiki or whoever did their survey with their building, drawings of their building. And then Balkan Uncle Chiki will plot that on their survey, address the 100 setback or the 75 setback, and then we can go there from there with the zoning to make sure the building is in the correct place. Am I correct with that, Randy? Yeah?
Are you okay with that?
Yep. Yeah, we just want to see that where it's placed is a representation because of course we're basing all our decisions on what they're presenting.
Exactly.
What's supposed to build this to later.
So is there any chance that, is there any possibility here of any screw up along the way of where we're going to be hearing, put it to 50 feet? Like, where's the, is there, I don't know, I just always think in the worst case scenario here of, yeah, the surveys come in, we do this, we do that, the process there, but... But is it, is there any way you can see some people kind of get around doing any of this?
There's nothing to get around. The surveys we currently have on file, we're all done by the homeowners or the landowners that represent what the land currently is. And Balkan Uncle Chiki had, as Jen pointed out, placed a hypothetical, smallest home, what your side yards would be, what your front yards would be, what your rear yard would be. Now, some of the, or the property owners feel that is their survey and that should be good enough to apply for building permit. It's not, because it's not a representation of what they're building. If you have 960 plotted on your yard, but you're building a 17 square foot house, it makes a big difference to where can you be on that location? And of course, now, the other thing on the survey is the 100 foot setback, now it's 75 feet, so that should be represented on that survey as well. Because in the future, if they try to sell or is there any changing of hands, that survey is going to be required anyway. At least we have our bases covered that everything is as it's supposed to be, so someone doesn't look at the survey and say, this isn't any representation of what is actually here. That's what we need on files, what is actually there.
So I've never built a house from scratch and involved the process. So if I bought a lot in town and I'm given the plans, then I still have to do the same thing you're talking?
And your survey must be within two years of age. There are, there have been a lot of discussions about, if it's an old home, for example, and nothing's ever changed, will there be times where we can adjust? Absolutely. You know, someone's going to build a little deck. As by our current bylaw, you're going to build a 10 by 10 deck in your backyard, obviously in your yard. Bylaw says you're supposed to get a new survey. Is that reasonable? No. You know, you're going to go spend $1,200 on a survey for someone to put a 10 by 10 deck.
And then that's immediate people doing it without getting permits if we start getting two. And when everyone bought their lots at the lake, they were all supplied with packages. And within, in that package, it was, I want to buy a lot from the town of the Paw, what do I do now? And it just, it goes through it. Once the town signs off on the agreement, you will need to contact a lawyer to arrange for transfer of the land from the town to yourself. The next step was, so now that you're a property owner, you can start preparing your property for construction. At this point, you contact the town of the Paw to see what is required before you start actual construction. You must obtain a building permit before you begin construction. What will I need? A site survey outlining your proposed building construction will be necessary in order to obtain your building permit. So it's all right in here what they need to do.
So the process then, they get a survey certificate done. Balkan and Uncle Chiki will take their plans and put it on that certificate. And then you confirm that that's where they actually put it?
I confirm the zoning bylaw.
But the actual physical...
What they should be setting up is their batter boards, saying, this is where I'm building my home. I can then do a rough estimate. Of course, I'm not a legal surveyor, so all I can do is say, to the best of my abilities, to some rough measurements, this appears to be correct. At the end of the day, the homeowner is ultimately responsible. Because again, ideally, once the home is built, there should be another survey completed to make sure everything is as it's supposed to be. You're not going to expect that because we're going to assume that what is done has been done to the best of the homeowner and our abilities to make sure it's correct.
So you're saying, you're saying in the end, there should be like an accident?
Not necessarily for our purposes, but of course, as...
Yeah.
...Aerogames can confirm, more than likely, if you're going to sell that home, they're going to ask for that survey to make sure there's no oiesments, there's no anything that's encroaching or there's any issues that could inhibit the sale of that home. So it is a good idea to prepare. But of course, we'd never tell someone, okay, you're done building, can you go get another survey? They're going to pull their hair out for all the money they're spending on surveys.
Okay, seems reasonable. We're good? Everybody's good?
And I will send the letter out to all the lakefront owners, knowing that this is the process. Okay.
Sounds good.
Cool, alright. Are they close by? Oh, do they call into council? Oh, okay, building inspection, what? Building inspection fees, issue sheet from the... Well, Randy.
Randy's going to take this one down.
Tell us about the fee structure and how it works.
Well, our fee structure currently is quite old, and Jen and I have been working on a new building bylaw, which I've promised her a number of times that will be coming forward, so my plan is to have it for the next meeting, for your first review. Jen just gave me a funny look, but that's the plan, because with the proposed building coming forward, now's the time to get it in place. We don't wanna be waiting until afterwards. Uh, there are some changes, that's what's taken some time, on how exactly I can write it to suit the needs of what we're trying to achieve in it. There will be amendments to the existing manual of a building code for our purposes in our municipality. Uh, in terms of structure, um, right now, the way it works is if you're gonna be building a new home, and the home is valued at, say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the first one hundred thousand dollars is at one percent, so one thousand dollars, and after that, it goes to point six for everything after that point. And that gives you your rate for your building permit. In that, that covers my cost to do inspections.
So Randy, um, do you, when you're costing this out, what manual are you using? So if somebody brings in your their plans, right, and they say, it's gonna be a hundred grand to build, and we know it isn't gonna be.
Right.
What do you do then?
Right now, we have a formula, uh, this is a new version. We use, we've always followed the Office of Fire Commissioner to be as consistent as possible in the province. Uh, what they do, in this case, um, as an example, for the main floor of a dwelling unit, including the basement, four hundred and eighty-four per square meter, or forty-five dollars a square foot. So if you come in and say, oh yeah, I'm gonna build this half million dollar place for a hundred thousand, obviously, there's gonna be discrepancy on what you're saying it's worth to what we feel it's worth. So this gives you your baseline of valuing that home when you have those discrepancies.
I'm sorry, did you say forty-five a square foot to build?
Not to build, that's what they're using as a, the exact sentence, well, exactly, because you know, to build, you're more like two hundred and thirty-five a square foot, right? So this is for calculating that home as a value, not as what it costs to build. But we don't always use that. If Councilor Zelinski is coming and say, hey Randy, I'm building a home, and uh, I think it's gonna cost me three hundred thousand dollars, I look at the plans and say, that seems reasonable. The permit is based off of that amount. But when you do get into the argument, then this is the formula that the Office of Fire Commissioner currently uses, which of course, we've always followed. These have been updated by twenty-five percent since last year. That was their increase this year.
So, um, wow, so.
Yeah, but keep in mind, that's not for the entire home, that's for the main floor. Then you get into the foundation, then you get into an upper floor, you get into attached garage. So all of a sudden, it might be more like one sixty a square foot by the time you add it up, depending on the complexity of the home. You build a straightforward, single level bungalow, that's the only number you're gonna be able to use, or then adding the foundation, which goes to uh, foundation is twenty-five dollars a square foot for the foundation alone, so then you're adding that to the forty-five. If you have an upper floor or a second floor, um, second floor is thirty-three dollars a square foot again on top of that. And then if you have a deck or a porch, or even an detached garage, so all these numbers accumulate. So again, it depends on the complexity and the construction of the home.
Okay.
And you said in the Schedule A, I have those two backwards.
Yeah, when we get onto our Schedule A, um, again, this was only our proposed and what Jen and I have been working with, but there was a mix-up here between the part nine family dwelling and the part three, part nine. Excluding singles, those numbers are actually backwards. The one percent for a hundred thousand, because not everyone is building a five hundred thousand dollar home, whereas it's very easy at a commercial aspect to get to five hundred thousand dollars. So those are just reversed, but again, that will be coming forward in our proper bylaw.
So let's say if it was a three hundred thousand dollar build, the permit's going to be?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars?
Twenty-two hundred dollars.
Twenty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And that would include how many inspections?
Again, depends on the complexity of the build. Normally, you're doing it six to nine on a straightforward build. Uh, you get into some complexities where maybe you're, you have cantilevered systems, or you have hangers, or you have different construction techniques, then there could be as many as fifteen inspections.
Okay.
Again, it's all about stages, right? If if I said, I'm gonna use Councilor Zelinski as an example, because he's a builder, a straightforward bungalow is very simple to put up, he can frame it up in a couple of days. You get into something else, maybe there's different stages, like Randy, I have to build this portion before you can inspect the next portion. So again, it, the complexity of the build.
So the lots at Clearwater, as they start to build, um, that's fifteen, seventeen miles away, right? Is it fair to charge them the same amount as you do in town? Or should it be a little more, cause it's up that far?
I don't think you should be punishing people that who decided to build on a subdivision that the town of Paw has created. They're paying equal tax, therefore they're equal to the same service. You'd be kinda punishing them. The only thing I would have to do different is manage my time, so instead of Chad building and then Mr. Murphy building.
No, no, Mr. Murphy's not building any accounts.
In the event that somebody.
Potentially, I might be buying a cottage lot, and so I just wanna make sure that it's clear that I am not building any cottage.
So as things are being built out there, I would be trying to schedule my time so I can do as many inspections at a time. So if I'm going out there and I'm gonna go spend the morning, I don't wanna go and do one inspection for vapor barrier. I wanna build, go and do as many inspections as possible to keep my time valued.
And how do our fees compare to other municipalities?
Uh, currently, because most municipalities have recently increased, right now, we'd be considered on the low end. With the new proposal in the Schedule A, we would be considered almost on the high end. Uh, as an example, the Office of Fire Commissioner is one point two five instead of the one percent, and then so goes to point seven five for the other remaining after the hundred thousand. Uh, minimum fee for the Office of Fire Commissioner is seventy-five dollars, ours is going to ninety. Uh, part of this, and in no way am I knocking the Office of Fire Commissioner, we're actually doing the inspections. Uh, if you're building a garage in the town of Paw, and the Office of Fire Commissioner was in charge, you're not gonna see them during that build. Whereas I will physically go out and and ensure that vapor barrier is in place and insurance or uh, insulation's in place, rebar is tied properly, and the concrete is placed properly. So there is actual inspection, and that's how we justify the additional cost for a flat rate. Cause right now, a garage is sixty dollars. We're hoping to put that to ninety dollars with the new bylaw, as opposed to the seventy-five that the Office of Fire Commissioner currently has.
So with that's going forward with the RM, would you use the same scale for the RM?
That would be proposed, of course, that would be up to them to dictate in their own bylaw, but that's what we would subject to before, submit to them, cause I think they're very open to, you know what, we just wanna make sure that our residents are being looked after, and we would have some input in that. They can always say no, but at the end of the day, they're the ones that are gonna dictate what their residents want.
As the fire chief and a building inspector, uh, it's not your job. If you happen to see any violations of workplace health and safety codes, do you have any ethical obligation to report those?
I think we all do, it doesn't matter if I'm the fire chief or Joe Blow on the street. We have to look after each other. Um, I don't have any different abilities than, like I say, Joe Blow on the street to say, you know what, that's not safe, and if they tell me to go jump, then it's up to me to determine, is this enough of an infraction to make a phone call to Flynn Flon to have workplace health and safety, or our CMT if necessary, but workplace safety, health and safety are usually pretty good.
Yeah. Cool. Any other questions for Randy? No? Okay. Great, thank you.
Only thing I wanted to add on here, um, something that we don't currently do in our bylaw, but it is on the Schedule A, uh, we would like to start charging a deposit on the inspections. Only because if, like I say, someone's building, say, yep, I'm gonna be ready for you to come and inspect, and I drive that eighteen kilometers out to the lake, and they're not ready for that inspection, they're gonna pay for that time. Obviously, I wasn't able to complete my job, and that's where you'd have the inspection deposit, so then you have a missed inspection, and there would be a charge for that, because I wasn't able to do my job, and I will be making an additional trip at some point to inspect it.
So would that be the minimum ninety dollars?
No, that would be on the bottom of the Schedule A, we're miscellaneous, so we'd ask for a deposit. So that way, because if I say, I'm gonna charge an extra two fifty, cause you missed your appointment, they're gonna say, good luck getting it out of me. So this way, you have that money kind of in hand, you fulfill all the expectations, and the occupancy permit has been completed at the end of the day, here's your check for five hundred or a thousand dollars back at the end of the day.
Sounds good.
Well, they have reasonable delays that they didn't control, like material didn't show up, weather.
Then a simple, simple phone call can always, yeah.
As long as they let you know.
As long as they let me know, I don't try to show up there with the intention of doing an inspection, they say, oh yeah, sorry, I forgot to call you. That's.
Oh, that's fair.
Yes.
Can Cody cover off for you when you're, if you happen to go on summer holidays?
He he can cover for fire-related, yes.
Uh, for the building code?
Not for building, no. He has none of the the training or background for building.
So, uh, again, I don't know what your holiday schedule is, Randy, but if anybody's planning, yeah. If anyone's planning to build this summer, do you let them know that you're gonna be away from?
I will, but, um, as an example, last year, I booked fourteen days off, and I got in eight of those days. So I'm always gonna make, if someone says, Randy, I really have to get this inspected, I gotta keep moving, I have no problem driving down the road from my own cabin, if that's where I happen to be, and go do an inspection and making the notes of that.
Just as long as.
Yeah, no, I, we don't wanna have business shut down, because I'm not available, for sure. We wanna accommodate everyone we can, especially when we only have, really, realistically, a four-month building season. If you can get it closed in, great, you can work all winter, but there's a lot of people that have a lot of work to get done before October.
So is there somebody who can help you, though? Is there somebody around Cranberry or around Flynn Flon, who if you did decide that you you were going to go away?
You would have to designate them as an officer of the town of Paw to have that happen.
And you would have to have training.
Yeah. So you can always ask the Office of Fire Commissioner to do that, but because they're not our current contractor, which, this year, if we had had them instead of myself, it'd be a twenty thousand dollar fee, cause it increased from the seventeen thousand by twenty-five percent, so it would've been twenty thousand dollars we paid for them to basically take our money.
And they keep all the permit money on top of it.
What would it take to train somebody else? Like, just for instance, like, you never know what's gonna happen, right?
Right.
You could end up in a Nazi.
Uh, I I I ended up taking, I ended up taking fifteen weeks' worth of training to have this designation, um, not to dismiss our fire prevention officer, but he basically said in his interview that he wasn't interested in doing the building aspect. He's never been a builder and isn't interested in that that field. That's why I've tried to put him in the fire inspections as much as possible. Uh, the way you can look at it is, building inspections are a new build, fire inspections are an existing build. So he has some of that background, but basically, it's through a checklist.
Okay.
So. All said and done, yes, he could go out there and take pictures, sometimes pictures are enough. I know, uh, Councilor Zelinski being a builder, there's probably been times where the building inspector from the Office of Fire Commissioner say, you know, take some pictures and cover your end, or send me pictures of your rebar, or whatever it may be, and then you'll say, go ahead. As long as there's some kind of record.
I did wonder, cause I mean, you never know what's gonna happen from day to day, and if something happens and you're in a place where you can't come for an inspection, you don't wanna hold up the homeowner from building either.
No, and usually, like I say, what will happen in those cases is, take as many pictures as possible to verify, so if I show up at a home and say, what have you done, you've put up all the drywall, I didn't see anything in place behind it, here are all my pictures, or I made a video. We live in a world today where everyone has a camera with them twenty-four seven.
Do we?
Right, there's no reason why they can't be able, I have a good ability to prove what they've done or what is behind that wall, without saying, you know what, I need you to cut it all out. We don't wanna get in those situations, but it is an option.
Yeah.
Uh, off topic a bit, Randy, but it relates to fees and building inspections, and that, we met earlier with Laurie from the Assessment Branch today, and gave us some news. Um, she mentioned that there's a lot of times people haven't taken out building permits in the community. Do you have any sort of action plan in place to try to educate people?
We've basically been doing that for almost three years now, of trying to express the importance and the need for them. Most people unfortunately look at a building permit as another fee they're paying, or another tax, it's a money grab, right? They don't understand the importance of, if you're gonna be constructing something, you want it to be safe. And that's the whole purpose of a building permit, is to ensure that it's being built, not just by the building code, but for the occupant's safety. So, once you're able to express that to them, but at the end of the day, you know, if they can hang on to their two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, they're gonna try to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't blame them anyway.
Right now, what's the, is there a fine? So if you go by and see someone building a garage?
Right now, if you if you were to be building something that was to be permitted and you didn't have a permit, the only fine we have is double that permit fee. So if your fee was supposed, or your permit was supposed to be three hundred dollars, now it's six hundred dollars. Yeah, so it doubles the cost of that permit. And you get, and you get shut down. Yeah, and the job is shut down until that is looked after.
If if somebody doesn't pay their building, like if they have fees for a building permit, do we have any recourse to add to their taxes? Like, is that something? No?
No.
But but we have all the other legal recourses, we could take them to small claims card. File against their title, the whole other thing.
And at the end of the day, it is town property. If they are totally in disregard of our bylaws and said, you know what, I'm just gonna do whatever I want anyway, you're not gonna stop me, stop workers or anything else, then we can do like a lot of communities have done, where you're basically showing up with Sam's piece of equipment and saying, okay, well, then it's gone.
They did it in Stoner.
I heard. It does happen quite often.
So is there, like, maybe some other problems, or are they a registered business in the town? Right, so is, is your, I don't know, machinery of business license right for the town? So if you, if, wouldn't you be able to pull up Kichaz and pull the permit in like two years, like, or eleven, right? So someone has.
I'm glad you said it. He is getting much better at coming and acquiring. Do I need to? And that's all we want. The more people that come in, that's what we're here for, is to answer their questions. Do I need one or don't I? You're not wasting my time by me educating you or saying, yeah, this is when you need one and this one you don't.
I guess what I'm getting at is that, obviously, this has been a practice, it's been, so in terms of the solution for it, if we actually pulled whoever the car from your license, whoever those people are i- that work in the in the town, like the little garages, and they haven't pulled, they've pulled two permits in the last two years.
Yep.
You've, unless you're one in the lotto, you're obviously clearly not pulling the permit. So we call them in and say, hey, listen, you know, you need to start pulling permits.
You're starting to infringe on their privacy of, for all I know, Chad's been doing nothing but flooring work and painting. There's no way of me verifying that he's doing work that should've been permitted. And if I do see him outbuilding something that should've been permitted.
But can we not have that conversation? I mean, we're not, we're not saying, hey, we know you are, but hey, listen, like, you're, you're.
It'd be similar to me saying, hey, you know what, we have bad kids at your school, how, don't you talk to these kids? You know, like, how come we've got bad apples out there?
Yeah, I tell you, hey, listen, these are all the parents I've talked to, and then, and these are, this is what I've done in my, in my day.
You can't take action on an assumption, right? Again, for all I know, those builders are doing things that are not permitted work. So to start pointing a finger, saying, hey, you know what, you you're a contractor, but you've never pulled a permit, what are you doing? And if you're never seeing them building something, it's, you know, hey, I I know you left the pot two o'clock and you arrived in Winnipeg at six, that means you sped, so I'm giving you a ticket, but you didn't catch me doing so.
Did, do we have brochures or handout material?
Yeah, similar to what the packages that Jen was just showing.
What I'm wondering about is, is there something that we could produce, that we could put on the counters at the lumberyards?
You attended.
McLeod, right?
You attended a bunch of those fairs they were having.
Yeah, we've done the fairs, uh, Timber Mart actually was one of them, that I did have the information on, what do you do now?
Yeah, but if we could leave it out for the homeowners.
Yep.
All right, so the homeowners can see why they need to build a permit. Cause I'll bet you, a lot of people don't even know they need one for certain jobs.
They have it posted.
You know?
Yeah. I've been on the radio also, uh, we've done articles in the newspaper regarding it. Again, we can't force feed people, all you can do is hope that they're doing the right thing and inquiring, right? I mean, we've had people build in just absolute disregard for the rules.
Okay. All right, any other questions for him? No?
No.
All right, thank you, Randy. Finance and admin, payroll and accounts, whole bunch of checks there.
So we'll need a resolution for pay period eleven in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars and seventy-three cents. Town of the Paw general checks in the amount of four hundred and forty-three dollars, sorry, four, four hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. EFTs in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand, fifty-three dollars and one cent. I noted, um, one check in the amount of, or for A dash one, environment services, it was cleaning of the airport fuel tank in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and fifty. Clear tech, it was chemicals for the water treatment plant, seventy-nine hundred. Municipal employees clearing, that was for pay, may payroll in the amount of forty-two thousand, approximately forty-two thousand. Seahawk specialized truck services was fire truck inspections in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Stitco, twenty-seven thousand. Thank you, Suez, water techno.
Suez.
Suez, thank you, Water Technology and Solutions was chemicals for the water treatment plant, once again, fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, there's various amounts for the power cycling center, Northern Gateway, Handy Van, CDC, those were all grants that were issued to them through the, uh, budget. True Blue Developments, that was sewer, it was jet work in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I believe our sewer jet was down.
Yep.
Yeah, all solar swamps, so we.
And that's it, that I noted, if there's any more questions?
I, it's kind of funny, it's funny. It's, um, tax.
Tax Service?
Well, tax, zero, 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 zero. But it's all legal, 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 all these people.
Which check number?
It's, um, there's a whole bunch, but we'll go with, uh.
Two, three, zero, five, three.
What's your question, though?
Well, what what are these all, like, what, like, it costs seventeen thousand, or seventeen hundred dollars here, but it's all just a bunch of names and it's all legal stuff.
What it is, is Tax Service looks after our tax sales, and that's their fees that they send to us, which gets put back on the homeowner, but we have to pay Tax Service.
Cause like, there's a whole section here, Brown Development, yeah.
Yeah, because they're properties in tax sale. So Tax Service. So tax service charges us a fee and then we put the fee, or not charges this fee. Tax service sends us an invoice, we pay the invoice, then we put that fee on the property that is in tax sale to get the money back.
Oh, okay.
It'll be on the taxes.
That's correct, and it'll be on the November tax sale. So those are properties that are going to tax sale.
Land's going on sale, come west. Any other questions on the financials? No, everybody's good? Alright, resolution, yep. Okay, the Pawlary Recycling Center Agreement.
Uh, at the May 27th meeting, Council Lane asked if an issue should be brought forward regarding the proposed recycling center agreement. Uh, I was, I did look for the previous agreement and apparently there was never a funding agreement between the funders and the recycling center, which is why this is, uh, needs to be done. The town controller reviewed the agreement and had the following issues and concerns. I believe you were going to take, I like you-
Yeah, we were gonna, myself and Bill and another couple of members on the committee are gonna meet with Graham and, uh, you know, I just had a brief discussion with you. I am by no means a, uh, an expert in, in agreements and Graham brings up a couple of good points in terms of the length of the agreement, the, what happens if we go into dissolved, who gets the equipment or whatever else that happens in there. So I, other than seeing it in layman's terms, there must be a, a, a legal way to write it out. So it's actually the, you know, we're doing the, protecting ourselves, uh, the best in terms of the exact amounts that were, that were proposed in there. Uh, we can certainly update the numbers in terms of the census numbers, but in terms of percentages, I think we're definitely getting the best bang for the buck, uh, in terms of our level of service versus the level of service we're giving to the other communities. So we need to, I need to sit with other members of the committee and go through with Graham and then present it to council and maybe we need to get, uh, another set of eyes to look at it to make sure it's a, uh, it's a good agreement, uh, going forward, so.
Just information?
Just information, yeah. Okay, Kelsey Trail Snow Riders.
Kelsey Trail Snow Riders have requested approval to groom a trail extension 1.5 kilometers to Wally's Place. This will afford groomed access to food, fuel, and services available there. The route is existing and requires no tree removal. This short extension would become part of their trail network and be signed as reg-, as required, as well as be covered under their provincial liability insurance. This is an existing route that is used and was previously groomed by the, but grooming was discontinued due to no formal approval from the Town of the Paw. This new section of trail would become part of, part of their, theirs and the snow, sorry, s- s- snowbank trail network and be covered under the snowbank provincial liability insurance. The 12,000 kilometers of snowbound trails in Manitoba, Kelsey Trail Snow Riders Volunteers maintains and grooms approximately 40, 400 kilometers locally. Uh, department recommendation is provide Kelsey Trail Snow Riders approval for this as this is a positive move forward and may bring more people to and through Town of the Paw. We've provided a map.
Anybody got any concerns? No? Okay, good. Alrighty, AllNet website.
We recently had a presentation with regards to the AllNet website and Connect. It was a, I thought it was a very good presentation. The website, I think will do wonders for us. It's got lots to offer. Uh, recommendation was going, is to go forward with the AllNet website, but not Connect at this time. The website is going to provide us with a lot more than we currently have and we may find Connect if not needed.
Any discussion?
I, I thought it was great as well, um, and I know, I think I had asked before, you know, what if all staff are not really into it or have time? And then their response was, well, we'll make sure they, we'll just tell them they have to, uh, but I, I guess my fear is that we get this Cadillac version and then we're going to be hearing, I can't update it, I don't have time, and now we just have a website and it looks, that looks even worse because now it's just, it's just just-
Looks great.
It looks great, but there's not updated information on it. So it's easier to say, uh, go ahead and do it, but, and there, and there's some great things, you know, here's the, the map of where the water break is and I just, I don't want to have anybody, you know, we have a, we don't have a whole lot of managers and people and maybe they, they will disagree, but you know, putting on maps where the water break is and doing this and doing this, are we adding too much to their, to their load or are we making it easier? And, uh, so I have no idea, but I guess if you revert it back to the managers and, and get what their opinion is, it'd be, it would, I would go with it.
Who would be responsible about the, and upload information?
Right now it is Sharon from the engineering department that looks after it, but it's a very- If no, that's not used, we don't use it to the fullest extent. It's a very small website. It doesn't have a lot of features and options like this would. If we, if council wanted to go with this, my recommendation would be that we would have to appoint a person that would be one of their main jobs.
Do we know how much time it'll take to get it up and running? We'll, we'll, uh-
I think he said eight to 12 weeks is how it would take.
During that 12 weeks, does the AllNet people get the initial setup done?
Yep, yep, they do everything.
And it'll be operational upon their finish?
Well, they're gonna have to have a project manager on our side to feed them information.
Yeah. So who could that person be?
I would do that.
Oh, Jen?
I, I, I know I need to have a question on- I shouldn't take on anymore, but I just, I think this would be very good for us. I really do.
So you and Sharon?
Sharon and I work together. I'd have to talk, I mean Sharon, I'd have to talk to Sharon's supervisor. I can't direct her.
But again, I mean, it's great that you take it on, but who's going to con, like all the bells and whistles that we saw and we like and, uh, great, like who's going, so there's a water break in the morning and these streets don't have water. Who's gonna go on the map and go do that? Who's gonna go and, you know, it, this is, this is a never, I've seen it before with schools, it's great, it's awesome. Now who's gonna take this information and upload it on, on, on the computer? Then it, then it becomes a person. Now, now we're, we're hiring someone now full time, uh, to keep our website updated. Meanwhile, we can't, we don't have enough time to-
To fix a water break.
Yeah, like I just, it's, is this just, uh, and I think it looked great, all the information's there, but is this a step forward or are we not, uh?
Well, I think if we, uh, there's the possibility on the water breaks. Uh, I'm hopeful that once Sam and Chris are conversant in the software, that they can do it very, very quickly. Is what I'm hopeful, right? Because when you consider just in the last week, how many inquiries I've received for different water break issues, uh, we're spending the time now. We're, and we're not communicating to the public very well.
I can ask Brayden that did the presentation to council, if he'd be willing to do the presentation to management and get management's opinion if they think it's gonna be-
Well, they need training.
But if, if it's the direction that council wants to go, then we just do it.
Yeah, I, I think we absolutely have to do it. Our, our website is terrible.
I think it's terrible.
Especially on this-
I, I also like the alerts. I thi-, I don't, I don't see why-
The website will do alerts.
The, the Connect-
The Connect, yeah.
I love it too, but I think we need to phase it.
The community will also need to know that it's an option that's available to them.
Oh yeah, we'll do a whole blitz about it and-
Yeah, so can you just-
But the website does offer alerts. There is an alert system within the website. Connect is just even bigger and connects another four grand a year.
I feel like we need more discussion.
So we're $5,400 for, per year?
For AllNet or for-
For the website. And then if we were to get the Connect?
The additional four grand a year.
What is our existing cost?
Eight hundred and some dollars a year.
It's too much.
We get what we need.
Well, you get what you paid for, yeah.
It's, it, I didn't go along with Trevor, it's the input time, like who is gonna sit and do the inputs, like it's-
It's great to have, hey, it's great to have, hey, look, I got a water, oh, my water's gonna be shut off at 8 o'clock. Right now, once-
Do you get in here, Sam? Do you feel that we need a better website? It'd probably help you guys with phone calls.
Come and sit in the chair.
Gonna put you in the hot seat.
Just stay down there.
Sorry, is that okay?
I think, I think there's no question that the website is outdated, needs to be updated. We've seen other communities, what, what they can do, um. And again, just sort of our previous discussion about, you know, better communication and all that, like, so it does fit that mold of what you guys are trying to, to push forward. We're stretched pretty thin. That, that's my feeling currently, um, especially with the rework that we've just kinda gone through, um, things are a little bit challenging, so I think, um-
If you give us an HR officer, we'll be good.
It would help for sure. Um, I guess it's a discussion for maybe a different time. Um, but, uh, like right now with the Facebook at least, like, you know, I'm trying to be more proactive, just thinking about it more often, so I'm able to do that from my personal phone, cause I can have Facebook and I'm, I'm logged on as someone that can update that community website, uh, community updates.
I was trying to last week too.
Yeah, so as, as the day goes, like I got home today, I was like, oh my God, I better update that one more time just to make sure people know, here's what's gone on today with that set, especially with a large event like that where it's affecting traffic, it's affecting the residents. Cause letters only kind of, sort of paint a, a small picture of what's happening, but I, I want people to know a little more, so. The input time definitely it would be a concern, yes.
I, I, I personally feel we need to move forward, that's my feeling, right?
Modern, the modern day, the modern age, so.
Well, and it's, you need to be able to commute with, communicate with the people, right? I, I get, I get a lot of texts and emails and messages and Facebook tags about water breaks and street things and all kinds of stuff. And if, if we had an actual operational working, uh, webpage, it should help. It really should help. And as far as the cost goes, I can tell you from experience, that's cheap.
Did we put that in our budget?
I think we did, didn't we?
I'd have to check. I don't.
I don't know. I thought we did, we talked about it, I thought we did.
I don't know, I, I agree with you, but I think that I'd be ready to move forward on this, like sooner rather than like, um, you know, I think the bugs will work themselves out and we are, are, we're in a desperate need of a website redesign. Um, and in looking at some of the other projects that AllNet has worked on, you know, it's something that-
I, I disagree, we've gotta ask them, but he's already said he's, he's stretched thin. And, uh, I mean, I saw, I mean, we did call that gentleman back there, cause we're, probably should've done a better job as you said, but he's probably busy. I've been playing phone tag with the engineering for some issue at my house and, and whatever else. I don't necessarily know who's going to get it, who's going to, who's gonna add it, it's an expectation that every day, someone every day will do it. So it's again, oh, we, we're great, we have, we're gonna have it, but if we're gonna go and do it, then I guess it's not just the budget for the AllNet, it's a budget for someone else to go ahead and enter all the information on it. People, the expectation will be, I didn't get it, I, I didn't get a letter, uh, how do you get their, I don't have a phone now. I just have a cell phone, mostly just have cell phones now. Their number is not, uh, we don't have their number, they're in a department, didn't have water, uh, I don't, I don't know. I'm not, I, I mean, I think it's great, but if, uh, we don't have the person that's gonna go ahead and be able to do all that, then, then I don't think, I mean, we can go with the new website part of it, but maybe not necessarily the whole, I don't know, that parts. Uh, I listened to the presentation, should've break it down, like, can you get all this? Just, I don't know, but if the water break stuff and map all comes in one package or, or we can get the, what we already have, but.
So the, uh, I, I would agree that the Connect, I, I would like to see it phased in, the webpage this year, get the bugs worked out of it, and next year we have a look at the Connect, uh, and it gives them enough to do. A lot of this stuff, it doesn't take as long to update or maintain as you think. So once you have the information in, you know, to, to let somebody know that there's a water break on 7th, I'll bet you it'll take you about two minutes, once you get used to it.
Is that?
Yeah.
No, it wouldn't be any different than what you're doing right now, it's crazy.
Or, or what I'm supposed to be potentially doing and not fulfilling. You know what I mean? Like that's, that's the part, like, I wanna like just temper the expectations, that like, it, it is a lot of work to, and especially to be, to provide a thoughtful, um, you know, school and what's happening, cause that was sort of our issue as we chatted previously was, we're sort of like trying to just figure out, going through the steps, like what is actually going on, so it's tough to provide.
Yeah, sometimes the public is happy with, there's a water break on 7th Street, we're aware of it and we're working to fix it. Great, you just saved me 10 texts.
I don't understand why you could do Facebook updates. Is everybody else that struck that it's coming back to you? And you can't designate and delegate something like that?
We could and we, 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 we do have other people that have access to do the update, but then someone has to provide them all the information in order to do so. So sometimes-
You want it to be-
Right, so sometimes like to phone them, text them or send them all in.
You can write it, send it to them and then tell them, post it. That saves you some time.
They can retype it.
It's like when you see barricades knocked down and someone takes the time to take a photo of the barricade knocked down and post it on Facebook where it would've been faster for them to just fix it, right?
Okay, so do we have a majority consensus to move forward with this and work out the bugs as we go along?
I guess the, the big question is whether or not it's been budgeted for.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll find out, right?
Yeah.
So if it has been budgeted for, are we moving forward with it?
Is the majority decision that if the money is in the budget, we're gonna move forward with it or not?
Yeah.
If we budgeted it forward, then we wanted it, right?
Majority is yes?
Who agrees?
Yeah, okay.
So can we set up, um, another meeting? So Sam and everybody else, sit down with AllNet?
I'm sure they can.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to Randy about all that and-
Yeah, I'm sure they will. So you can see the benefits.
Do you have a meeting resolution coming in here?
Yeah. It's not where you're gonna sit down and take a whole letter.
Will I need a tablet for that or what would it?
When we were at, uh-
Sorry, I'm sorry, I could tell myself.
When we were at AMM, when we were at AMM, there was a lady at the trade show who was their rep. She did a much better job, uh, demonstrating the practical abilities of that software.
Than Brayden did.
Than Brayden did. She did a much better job. So if you were, if you could get her to show staff, you'll see a different program.
There was, there's, but you were the only one listed as in it. I can't represent anymore.
Well, the lady who was AMM, she did a much better job.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure she did.
Okay, uh, 4.5, crack ceiling.
What airport, crack ceiling? Tender 01, 2019, an invitation to tender was sent to suppliers and advertisement was placed on the town webpage and in the Pasco Times for routing and sealing of cracks on runway 13-31 at the Paw Airport. The following tenders were received May 31st and opened, two bids were received. Uh, the ten, or recommendation from the purchasing agent is the tender from Precision Joint Sealing Inc. in a lump sum of $38,800, excluding taxes, be accepted.
The airport manager was good with this?
Yep, airport manager, purchasing agent, and the controller. So, resolutions required so they can move forward.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, we budgeted 50.
Yeah. So, that's good.
But then it's a lot different if you were to take the 180 days, one's a year.
Yeah, for sure. And they didn't like that they wanted...
The crack ceiling?
No, okay, all right, okay. We'll go back to it. Whatever else is back there.
Okay, so now we're at 4.6, limestone.
Limestone three-quarter A base, an invitation to tender was sent to suppliers and advertisement was placed on the town web, on the town webpage, Merks, and in the Pasco Times for supply hauls and stockpile of 3,000 metric tons of three-fourth limestone A base with the following specifications. Obviously, I have no clue what that is by the way I read it, right?
It's actually three-quarters.
Three-quarters, whatever, sort of. That's why I'm in administration. Tenders were received by May 31st and opened, there was only one bidder, the tender from Strukuski's Contracting that added in the lump sum amount of $65,775 including PST and GST be accepted. It was a recommendation of the purchasing agent. And Sam, or the municipal superintendent and the controller were both involved in the opening of the tenders.
And is it within your budget, what you're hoping for?
Was it within your budget, Sam?
Uh, the price is a little higher than we expected, but it was...
You can make it work.
You can make it work, yeah.
Resolution will be required.
Pretty expensive, maybe.
Is it expensive?
Twenty dollars or two bucks.
I thought it was three-quarters or three-fourths or whatever I said, I don't know.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, 4.7, tenders.
Councilor Forster was appointed to, by council to sit on the PMJAC, Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee. There's a meeting in Winnipeg on Friday, June 28th, and Councilor Forster would like to, Forster would like to attend. Everyone knows what the objective of the committee was and it's what we're focused on right now. Recommendations approve the request. The only reason this came to council was because it's out-of-town travel, where other committees don't require out-of-town travel. And then my other question was, does council, also, does this type of request need to come to council for approval in the future?
Well, if it's within your budget, I don't think it needs to come back.
It's not within his, his own budget, but it is within council budget.
Yeah, I don't see why it has to come back.
And the only meet, like, how often?
Meet three, two months each year?
Only once a year?
Yep.
Yeah, I also think that's what it was this year, it seems to be a little bit more.
So, there's no opportunity to meet there, or something like that?
Um, I tried it once and really I wasn't happy, but it's, I, I'm a person that likes to deal with people face-to-face.
Sure, yeah, go to answer.
You get a better response and you get to see how they're responding to what you have to say, right?
So, we'll do a resolution this time and I'll include the resolution that future meetings do not need to be approved.
Can I ask Sam a question? Sorry.
Is he still here?
Yeah, still with the limestone, sorry. So, if it went up $2 per yard, per yard or per cubic yard, it went up $2?
Per cubic yard.
Per cubic yard, okay, thank you, sorry.
Field discount policy.
Don't we got lost in this?
This one I don't, I will be very honest, I don't fully understand. This was written, the issue sheet was written by the assistant airport manager and the airport manager. The Pot Airport, the Town of Pot Airport received a request from a local company for a discount on fuel. We do not have a policy in place for this. The recommendation was a policy should be adopted to clarify requirements that must be fulfilled in order to become eligible to negotiate for the bulk fuel discount. And this, this policy should be created before this request is even dealt with. There's a few, a few tenants or a few place, or a few people, users, thank you, that do get discounts. I'm sorry, like I said, I was very confused with this. Before entering into negotiation with operators to offer fuel incentives, they have proposed that a minimum of the following criteria would need to be met. Aircrafts are based at the airport on lands leased by the operator and they should reach a threshold of 5% to 10% of the previous year's total leaders sold. Three operators currently have dis, the three current operators that have a discount would be grandfathered into this agreement and maintain their discount at .05 per liter purchased without reaching that 5% to 10% threshold. Where operators are tenants, the town is generating additional revenue in form of leases, taxes, and landing fees. Further, these operators are investing in jobs at our airport and in our community. Offering bulk discounts to operators that are not purchasing bulk amounts of fuel decreases probability without, sorry, probability without meaningfully contributing to revenues. The bulk fuel discount as of right now is limited to 0.05 per liter. And then she provided information in the back of what the last year's leaders sold They're requesting that council review this proposal and if accepted, we will proceed with formalizing this policy. This policy is intended to clarify the minimum threshold to receive a discount of .05 to internal operators and to grandfather in existing informal agreements with our airport tenants. And as I said, I believe this, we should review this policy or start working on this policy before the request is reviewed. If that made any sense, I apologize.
I read this through, I don't know how many times, it just didn't, it says, it says historically, our tenants, mental government air services, now Bobcock, Bobcock International, Com Air, JB Air, have received .5 cents discounts per liter purchased at the Pot Airport again. These discounts, formally agreements have been in place since 2015, so that it's already in place.
There's no policy for it though.
Well, you know what didn't make sense to me, that there's no actual, there's no benchmark to follow. It should be on some sort of fuel pricing index that, because it said the fees have been the same for 2015, but fuel prices have been increasing, so I'm not sure why it's not indexed to some national fuel pricing index or something. Because it should, your fuel prices should be changing all the time, whatever you're purchasing at.
Yeah, I think that, I think, and that's why they wanna give a half a cent off or whatever.
No, but it should be, but when I was reading this thing, I was thinking, like, if it's been that way, they haven't changed the rate since 2015. Fuel prices have moved around since 2015.
Yeah, they move around all the time, I would assume.
Yeah, if you recall to one of our much, much earlier meetings, when we talked to Graham about the profitability of the fueling operation, it was because we charge a lot.
Actually, I did a quick check online and we're very similar and actually, I was just like, pretty well the same as, I went to Winnipeg Airport and I just Googled Manitoba fuel pricing for Jet A and that other price, and I was very close to the same prices.
Yeah, well, I just remember, remember he gave us a presentation and the profitability of our fueling operation?
Yeah, I know, I know it's very profitable, yeah.
It was significant, so that's probably why we hadn't seen a change, because I asked him the same question. How come we're missing the changes?
Is that fast air in Winnipeg was very similar pricing as us?
Why, why, see Calgary International's the exact same price as us.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, so the pricing aside, they're looking for some kind of a policy or guidance in place of when we can give a discount to a customer?
It should be like that.
Sure, I think it's fine.
And your recommendations based on volume and if they're a tenant?
Well, and based, yeah, and based on that they've reached within their five or 10% of whatever, yeah.
But see, and then as you go in here, they go on a discount of .5 cents per liter purchased without reaching a 5% to 10% threshold.
That would be the ones, they wanna grandfather the ones that are doing that.
Okay. So, if they purchase a little bit less fuel, they're not gonna get, or not gonna miss their discount?
Because they've always been getting it, or already been getting it.
Okay, so, could somebody draft a more easy to understand policy?
I have to put it in the format and everything, and we, I, we don't need all the information and the charts, just a basic...
Just a policy on what you have to do to get a discount.
Okay, and bring it back?
Yeah, and we could ask Graham again about the pricing strategy, because we did ask him once before.
Like I said, I love to just...
Yeah, it's, it's in the ballpark, so...
It's close.
Do you want me to talk to Graham or?
Just confirm that he's on top of the pricing strategy. So, you'll come back? More to come?
More to come.
All right. New business next meeting. Anybody got anything? When is the next meeting?
Two weeks.
24th, June 25th.
June 24th, oh Jesus, okay. Sorry, Roger?
I did send, because I missed the time because I forgot, I did send Jen an issue sheet on police branding, we talked about that, because I think...
I never got it.
Well, I sent it to a different Jen then.
You must have, I didn't receive it, I don't think I received it, sorry, I'll have to look.
Anyways, I will, I have till next Wednesday anyways.
Yeah, it's a fact now.
Putting it on here and making sure that it doesn't miss. And I would like to know if we could have an in-camera personnel discussion?
Yeah, I have something too. And we do have a couple of things in camera, so we'll allow it to.
I'd like to see one of our agreements come.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter which one it is, let's just start, start ruling if we can.
What agreement?
I was very much like, we have with RM1s.
Our safety, have one with mine or... Let's look over and review it and make sure that it's still...
I thought it was just the Kelsey Road.
Because none of them have been going over.
Okay, which agreement, did you want to start with, Carrie? Something with the RM?
It doesn't matter, we, I don't even know what all of our agreements are because they haven't been brought back to let us know what agreements we actually have, that was a conversation that we had.
Agreements come back when they're up for renewal.
I think, I think all the RM1s are up for renewal.
Yeah, and I've asked all managers to produce them for me, which I haven't brought them all back yet.
Okay.
Are you gonna be at the 24th meeting or you won't be here?
24th?
Yeah.
No.
No, you won't be here, okay, so...
I didn't think I was gonna say any.
June 24th is the next one.
Do we start today?
No, I won't be here, June 24th. So, when you want the agreements brought forward, you want the agreements, just the agreements brought forward, no issue sheet, no comments, you just want to see what the agreement is and you have discussion, or you want the manager?
I would say, bring the issue sheet, or bring the agreement, bring the manager. And you might wanna bring Graham. Because most of our agreements have a financial impact.
Okay, but no research needs to be done?
No, no, we wanna, we wanna read them, see where we're at, and then from there, and then from that discussion, we'll come up with some ideas.
Okay.
Anything else for new business next meeting? Okay, motion, and there'll be no business coming out with you guys.
100.
7:40.
Just looking up, uh, email. Uh, resolve that we now move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the whole, committee of the whole with Mayor Jakes and the chair to discuss matters regarding this.